Let's try this. Frank, can you hear me?
I can hear you.
All right, we are just working on some technical details here and we will begin very shortly.
All right.
All righty, and welcome. I'm going to see if everybody can hear us. We are working using many computers. So first, I'm going to try with Frank. And Frank, how are you?
I'm doing fine. How are you, Ryan?
All right, so I have you and we're working on some technical details here. And seeing how things work. So what we are going to do now, and I appreciate everybody's patience, as we're having some browser issues. And had to connect Kate through an old fashioned system called Zoom, which isn't that old fashioned. So let me try this. And Kate, can you hear me? All right. Let's see here. All right, we will stand by everybody. Hey Kate, how are you?
Oh, can you hear me?
I can. And let's see if Frank can hear you. I think I might have finally figured this out.
I can hear.
Yes.
I am using three computers right now in order to host this conversation. So if anybody is hearing me twice, let me know.
I don't get an A in technology.
It's okay. And nobody's getting an echo or anything else?
Pardon me?
No, it's good.
All right. So I apologize for the error and the technical. Our service that we do this by. Isn't isn't imperfect and sometimes browser issues. So what we're going to do is. Kate, why don't you start? We'll just settle in and you should know all these answers for any Newport, new Newport voters. Or anybody that isn't familiar with you, why don't you just give a little background on who Kate Leonard is? Kate is running for Ward Three on Newport City Council. You'll see her on the September eighth ballot. So go ahead, Kate.
Okay. I go back in on city council for a long time. I bought my first house here when I was 21. Wanted to work here since then, but couldn't because there were no jobs at my educational level that would pay me enough. So I bought my first house and it was my part time house. And then that was 1978. And then I've always been here since a little kid because most of my family lives here. So visited grandpa and all that. Went to college. Went to CCSU, graduated with a master's from Wesleyan University. And got two, two more, went to Fairfield with Sacred Heart to have a PhD education, was certified in. Six different certifications of the state of Connecticut for education where I worked for 25 years. And then I moved here full time in 95. And here I am. And then when I ran in 1995 against an incumbent. And people said I'd never get elected, but I was here full time. And then two weeks I was totally bored. So that's why I ran. I've been here ever since. On city council ever since for two terms. Way back at the beginning and I've been reelected ever since. And so here I am. And I guess I could say that. After 20 years this time, I just thought that maybe I wouldn't run. And then people started calling me and saying, oh, you have to run. You're the mouse. You're the bridge. And I think because I'm so much of an advocate for. All kinds of people here. I don't want to lose families. I want more families. And I think that if you live here and you deal with tourism and you deal with a lot of. Things that are not so pleasant. On the other hand, we live in a gorgeous, beautiful place where people care about each other. So then I said, okay, I'll run again. So here I am. And. My phone usually starts ringing like seven in the morning, sometimes goes till midnight because people know I don't sleep very long. And I answer all calls and texts and the emails. Unless it goes into my spam and I don't catch it somehow on an email. But the rest of the time I answer the phone, I call people back because I care about people. And not just those in my ward. I think that even though I'm the only person on the city council that lives in this ward. That I still owe it to people throughout the city to help them if I can.
So Kate, let me jump in here real quickly and to to our to our to our. To our list here of some questions. Of course, we're in the midst of this COVID-19 and all of the restrictions. Are you, are you satisfied with how the governor has performed during this? And are you satisfied with how the city has responded? Kate, did you hear me?
I take it she may not have. Kate, can you still hear us?
Yeah, I can hear you.
Can you hear Frank?
Kate, can you hear me?
All I see is the WhatsApp nuke.
Okay, so but you can't hear Frank in the background there?
No.
All right, well, we will, we'll work on that. But what Frank was asking you was. What steps, how have you been satisfied with the COVID-19 response by the city of Newport? What steps do you think the city should additionally take or take to prevent COVID-19 outbreaks? In the city and what should the city be doing to enforce restrictions?
Well, first of all, it's an international issue. The rest of the world's going through it, different countries, different magnitude of how we're impacted. Because it could be a life threatening virus. And I think the the main goal. Like I can only say for me on city council, I can't speak for anybody else, is to keep our people healthy. I think that's imperative. I think we owe it to people. We need to wear masks. I had said to Joe Nicholson, when the signs went up, please wear your mask. I thought that was way too easy. So I said to him, stop already. You've got to put masks are mandated. Because I think that's the first line of defense. For people not to catch the virus. And I know some people don't want to wear them, but even if you wear it for yourself. It, it has another layer of protection. And. I think those are things that we started with. And then we started to look at crowds and. Lack of social distancing. We worked with the, you know, we had Joe Nicholson because we can't tell employees what to do. Worked with Joe Nicholson and he really worked with the restaurants and the businesses and they put in permits or and. Applications of how they would do social distancing. So we could try to bring these businesses back on. Because they're the ones that employ people. And I don't want to see the businesses go down the tubes. We've, they've got to have income. A lot of them pay rent. Especially in the Thane Street area, high rents. Well, they've got to have some kind of income, some kind of economy to help us. In the city. They, I mean, that's why people work. They have a place to work, to go to, to work. And so I think that number one is. You know, making sure social distancing occurs. I know that a couple of restaurants got violation notices. From the Rhode Island Department of Health. I called them myself personally. To say, are you working with that? Are you on board? You need to do it. And I think that we're going to need to hopefully find that the country gets a vaccine that works. The restaurants, you know, want to reopen so that they don't have like such a small volume of business. And I think that's what we have to do with national and international thing. There's no difference. I just think that, you know, we've got to take it one step at a time. If the vaccine is perfected. It's proven that'll help us get our economy back on board, but we really need to have healthy people. And protect them as much as we can.
Hey Frank, you can hear me, right Frank?
I can hear you, yeah.
All right, what we're going to do, Kate, you cannot hear Frank, right?
No.
Okay, so what we're going to do is try this. Frank, I'm running in another device now and.
Okay.
So why don't you go ahead with a follow up, Frank?
All right, Kate, let me, hopefully you can, you can hear me. Hopefully you can hear me. My, my follow up question is, we were talking about the economy. Are there steps that the city of Newport can take to, to help its business community now? That go beyond what the governor has done, that beyond what the, what the federal government has done?
Yeah, Frank, I don't, we're having some audio issues unfortunately. I think we're connecting through too many devices here. What I'm going to do, Frank, is I'm going to send you a different link.
Okay.
And connect through that. It's a Zoom link and you'll be able to join us. So I'll do that in a minute here.
Well, carry on and I'll do that. And when you, I'll get out of this and wait to get that.
All right. And while you do that, Kate, what Frank was going to ask about is, you know, what are some of the steps we can start taking towards? Economic recovery, you know, during right now with COVID-19. As well as after. What are some of the things city council can do?
Well, I think that. We're hoping and we're trying towards economic recovery. And we're doing that by following state guidelines. And we're having what I call slow openings for restaurants and businesses. The retail stores are slowly opening, but not at full capacity. They have somebody at the door counting numbers. Same thing supermarkets, banks, most of them have not opened their lobbies. And I think that what happened is that, and we're not the only ones. Is that Newport, like the rest of the world figured out that if you have a crisis. And most of your economy is tied into. A specific type of job or in our case tourism. That the impact is much harder on the community. That deals with vast numbers of the public coming in. So I, I think that was a reality check for us. So. I guess we can say you asked about an economic recovery. Where did we go from here? And if you ask the question, which I've asked the question myself a long time, like where do we go from here? We start to open up the tourism that brings in jobs again and tax dollars so that we can operate. And then look at the constant question of. Can we diversify our economy? Which we've asked for years and somehow always goes back to tourism because that's what we have. We have a beautiful. A beautiful resource. And. We've worked, the cities worked towards diversifying, which is, I think, part of this economic recovery. So we worked with the state and the feds. We got money to take the old Sheffield school. And do, you know, the innovation hub. That was about six million bucks of combined. Funding and effort. So we got that up and running. I think we need to look at. Furthermore, how do we do that? Because we got the Navy base, which is huge. For a big, that's a big, big employer, one of the biggest. Salva is a big employer. Preservation Society used to be, but they've, they've laid off a lot of people. And I think the biggest thing in my opinion as an educator is. How do you train people, educate people, encourage people to move here with families? And what kind of jobs? How can we train people or bring in trained people or educated people to fill the jobs? Because a lot of big companies, and I know a lot of people that own big companies. They say we don't move to a place where we can't find employees. So I think that's a big piece of it, the educational piece, the training piece. And I think Newport needs to, I don't know if you noticed it, but I noticed it because. We try to find a plumber and try to find an electrician. An HVAC guy, a lot of the trades. We have a hard time making phone calls and finding people that aren't booked. So a year round economy. Needs all of this. And I think that's what we have to do. We got, we were lucky. Iris came on board and they do training with maritime trades. And then, you know, I don't know what the North End is going to open. We had. We're doing a North End development and had stakeholders, what do we want? This will probably be, because Newport is so developed. This will probably be our last frontier. To actually bring on. You know, a stronger economy, whatever we end up choosing. And it'll be a public process of what we want to concentrate on.
I'm good. I'm good. Hi Kate.
Hi Frank.
All right, we're all hearing one another. Ryan, I'm not sure where we got to on, on our, on our list here.
Kate was touching base on our economic recovery question, but I think she touched base on almost every other question as well. So. I'll pull up this one here so you know where, where to go here. So Kate, you know, you mentioned a little bit and do you believe Newport relies too heavily on tourism? Hospitality industry? And what alternative industries should the city be looking to develop in some of those areas you spoke about?
No, I kind of touched on that. I think that tourism is what we have today and this day. What we have. The pandemic affected it. That's what we have. Do I think that we need to diversify? Yes. Have I said it for a long time? Yes. We have company, we have some big companies here. We actually, and I met personally with Quantum Group. Because. They had a really good goal, but I questioned the, the guy from Quantum, Jason, I can't remember his last name. And I said to him, explain, you know, what you want to do here in Newport. And he gave his goals for the company. And then I thought about it, thought about it. I said to him. Wait a minute, let me just ask you a loaded question. It seems to me like you're a think tank. And he finally said, yes. And I said, all right, the quantum computer system is a think tank. And we'll, and we'll take that as a given. How do you implement it into real jobs? How do you make that into a real economy? I said, you, what you do is if you're a think tank, you get everything ready to go. I said, you, what you do is if you're a think tank, you get everything ready to go in a thought process and a company process. But then you've got to raise the money like a startup and raise the money so that you could actually create the work. And honestly, we haven't heard from them since. Because I don't think you could have a think tank. You've got to have, I mean, we have Raytheon. We have, um, the Navy, we have cybersecurity. I think a lot of these things we need to, um, build on and bring the people here or train the people we have here to fill those positions. Cause the Navy base, knock on wood, is expanding and they employ a lot of people. And that's what I think we have to do. We've got to reach out. We've got to think of ourselves as a piece of the whole economy here. And the city is a piece of that. A big piece in how we encourage them. But really, I think we need to do our best to see that people are employed and that they have jobs that can support them and their families.
Let me kind of switch gears a little bit, Kate, and, um, and ask you about climate change. It impacts everything. And, uh, my, my question with that is, A, is it, uh, do you consider it to be a problem? What should Newport do about it? And, and actually what impact it might have on the city's economy?
Okay. First of all, and I tell people this all the time. We have a lot of land in Newport that was filled. The land became land, but it was water. You can go down to the point, they don't have names like Marsh Street for nothing. It's because it wasn't marsh. Wellington was filled. We have Wellington, we've got Bridge, part of Bridge Streets flood plain. The part that they call the swamp, which is down there on the first ward two. And I think that by recognizing that, we know that mother nature's trying to take it back. And I think that that's part of climate change. Mother nature's trying to pay, take back what we filled it. And we see that in the tides. And the city council has done a lot to do this, to bring it forward, to deal with climate change. I think one of the big things happened a few years ago where we actually had a national conference here in Newport. Uh, Gold Island, and people came from all over the country to talk about how do you deal with climate change, resiliency? And so that's part of it. We, um, we took the pumping station on Wellington that was, didn't work for years. And it was put up by a company called M and E Engineering. And I always called it mistaken errors because it never worked. And then we spent about $6 million redoing that pumping station. And that alone helped, I think, um, in keeping the water out of the Wellington Avenue area and from taking the pollutants back into the, into the harbor. And then we started the program, and a lot of people don't know this because we were kind of quiet about it. We, we, the city council passed regulations that you could not have your gutters going into the storm drains. So we forced people to disconnect. We had people from the city knock on doors, make sure that the gutters weren't going into the storm drains. We cleaned the storm drains. I know that the sewer, there was no sewer line, uh, in the toilets at King Park. Cause I, everybody kept saying, why is it always polluted at King Park? Why can't we swim here? And I said, this is ridiculous that nobody could find it. So I got a couple of volunteers, engineers, and we made the city open up the bathhouses at King Park. And we put red dye into the toilets and the sinks. And we waited and waited to see where the red dye would come out, came out right in the harbor, which told me that we didn't have a sewer line. So I started a big ruckus about it because I'm pretty good about that. And we now have the bathhouses at King Park going into, um, the, the sewer system. So we don't have as many closings of that park. We worked towards cleaning up Goose neck Cove with the feds, save the bay, the state. It was a consolidated effort to clean up Goose neck Cove. And that today has, you know, aquatic life there. You can go down there off a hazard and you can see that there's no more algae blooms and that one's cleaned up. I think we have to work on Almy Pond because that's now a big problem, big problem to find out. Um, I don't know how much more you want. We put the, the city put the UV system into, uh, down by Easton's Beach. And I voted no, I voted no for the seaweed harvester. That cost us almost half a million dollars and never worked. It was a prototype, never proven, all apart, piece of junk. Then the UV system, I had called the head of EPA through a connection of mine and said, do these UV systems work? We're going to spend seven or eight million dollars. Do they work? And the head of EPA sent me all kinds of information and said, you can deal with some of this pollution that goes into the Easton's Beach area by doing different things. And take the parking lot that's asphalt and make it a permeable surface. So when the water, when it rains and the pollutants catch the oil from the cars, it'll go in the ground rather than into Easton's Beach. We didn't do that. So I wasn't happy because I had a, I actually had a philanthropist willing to make the parking lot and pay to make it permeable to try to help keep the beach clean. So people could swim. We, they also said to put plantings. I did all this stuff EPA brought it to the council and said, please, before you spend seven or eight million dollars on a UV system, why didn't you call the head of EPA? Why didn't you ask the feds for help? We did. So that was another one. I'm kind of an advocate or not kind of, I want to see clean water. I want to see clean air. So I quietly do things.
So Kate, that brings us back to the question. And so I, I assume based on all that, you do believe climate change is a major concern. And is there anything that you think policymakers should do to respond going forward?
Yeah, I do. I, I think that we have to work on identifying as many issues as we can that show us how to deal with climate change. I mean, some things we have, I know that trying to conserve land helps. I, um, I worked with a, a foundation to buy the land off a spouting rock, which is, you know, connects to Almy Pond. And the philanthropy foundation bought what could have been seven or eight buildable lots. It's now open space. So when you have open space, and I think you deal with, you know, development has a lot to do with, I think, how you deal with climate change. Bellevue Gardens, for example, we required rain gardens. All of it, I think is a part of a big picture. So if we want to have a healthy environment, I don't think we can control climate changes, but we can mitigate it as much as we can and try to prevent, you know, more damage or more issues. And, you know, you can't hold the tides back, but you can try to make it so the tides don't take your houses out to sea. I mean, on Bridge Street, a couple of houses were moved up in the air and that was a, a good thing. You know, uh, DEM's working on that too, Department of Environmental Management. How do we deal with it? It's a, it's a national issue, mostly around, uh, communities that are, you know, on the water because they're the ones that are most affected.
Maybe we can shift gears a little bit from, from climate change to the, uh, the current climate relative to, uh, Black Lives Matter, where the city stands, whether you see, uh, uh, any systemic racism within the city of Newport? And, uh, what, and if the city of Newport ought to be doing something to, um, to bring people together?
I don't like divisiveness. I think it's really bad for any community. I don't care what kind of divisiveness it is. And it's obvious because we had protests and we had conversations, we had items on the docket that there are a lot of people that feel that there is systemic racism. I understand it. I understand they feel their, their needs have not been met. I can say that I know that a lot of the protesters are Newport people. And I think we have to have more conversations on why their needs have not been met and their feelings. But I know a lot of people who were, came in from other communities too, as part of this. And as a city council member, I'm open to understanding the needs. And I think that it warrants more conversations. Um, the city council passed, and you all covered it, a resolution on additional requirements in schools, uh, for teaching kids, students, history and how, you know, and I use the word, which is an old word, melting pot, that some people say, oh my God, that's horrible. But it wasn't meant to be horrible in those, in, in past days, nor now. It just means that our country is built and has come to be from people who came here from all countries, indigenous people here and so forth. And I personally feel, uh, and I've talked to Salve's Mike Semenza about it. I've talked to a friend of mine who's on the NAACP. I think that part of the problem for people feeling that they haven't been treated fairly is that oftentimes we don't recognize people for the good things they've contributed to society. And I think that's a part of it. I think I gave suggestions to Salve of types of courses they could do because part of my job in working was to create curriculum. So I think that's part of it. I think people are less dissatisfied if they have good jobs, earn a good living and they can wake up in the morning and say, my family's provided for. And I think that's part of the educational component or the training component too. And I think that it's important that Newport has the council. We have unity in dealing with any of these issues, not the divisiveness that is often out there. And we can see it in other cities throughout the country. And I think we have to look at Newport. And we keep hearing about One Newport, which I totally agree with. And if you're going to take the North End and say One Newport, how do you incorporate it so people can travel from one side to another, work one side to another? How do we do that? I think that's got to be part of the big conversation.
Who leads that conversation?
Pardon me?
Who leads that conversation?
I think it's the stakeholders of the entire community. I think it's the city council. I think it's organizations that deal with people, especially people who are in need and don't think their needs have been met. I think it's, it's a big picture. I don't think it's a simple, the city's going to pull you out of it and make everybody whole. Cause I, I don't think it happens that way.
Yeah, Kate, let's see here. Um, we are going to move forward. Well, we've, we've brought it up a little bit and I know it's, uh, not completely in the third ward. Well, it's not actually in the third ward, um, is the North End. And, uh, you know, what would you like to see done in the North End? Um, let's, I've been using the example of it's 2030, the North End is built up. What is there in the North End that you think is the best for everybody in the community?
First of all, I think we have to think about what do we want to see? What do we want the goal to be? For me, and I think it should be a council, uh, working with the people who, who are here. Is I voted for the first moratorium when, um, this is just one project that happened to hit the, the council docket, the Carpionato Group. And I looked at it and I did a whole lot of homework because I always do. And said, do I want to live in a town? Do I think people want to live in a town where we have 90 foot high buildings? And the answer to me was no. I think if you create a place like, try to recreate a place like Newport where people come here to see the ocean, to see the, the, the drive, the wildlife. I don't think they want to come to see high rises. They could go do that anywhere. I think that North End planning has to be where you incorporate most of, not all of the city. Because that's how you get jobs. That's how you get people moving. And I think what, oh Frank, I hope you don't have what I have. I, I think that
Have allergies.
That's what mine is. So I think what we have to say is, and have is a trolley system. And I fought for that probably for, to have got since 2003. And the Foundation for Newport first came out with the trolley system idea. And it was privately funded by people in the community because they knew if you get people to get into a system, you take the traffic and the congestion out of the neighborhoods. And that's what people want. They're tired of it. So I think that, and I can tell you, Salve, um, and they're still doing it, decided to try it, buy into that. And they put, I think the first year about a hundred thousand dollars into a trolley system for students. And said, you can't have your car on campus. If you're living in a dorm, uh, you can't do that. You got to use the trolley system. And that helped quite a bit. I think that if you do what, and I traveled to places to learn. I like to learn. Went to Williamsburg, went to Charleston. Martha's Vineyard has a semi, um, trolley system. But you capture the cars when they come off, when they come to the location. And you provide a trolley system that's self-supporting, nominal fee to keep it going. And the North End, I think, would be greatly helped and come back to being what they call One Newport. That would be one of the big things. So the other thing in the North End, we've won national awards for our Newport Heights project. I think what would help, and I said this during the discussion of the old Haili Land. I think it would be nice to have, um, you know, better health services. So maybe, uh, the Newport Hospital did put a walk-in clinic, they call it, let me think, um, urgent care center, but it's in Middletown near Stop and Shop. There's another one on Equidnic. I think you need something that's walkable. So maybe something like that in the North End. I think mixed use. So you can employ some more people maybe, but I don't want to see nine But I don't want to see 90 foot high buildings. I think the bridge alignment's going to open up if it happens, because the state is in such a quagmire with a huge deficit. I think if the bridge alignment happens, the realignment, that land will be open. And that's when the city needs to really step up and say, how do we use our zoning tools to make sure that what happens there is for the good of the entire community?
Okay, let's, let's uh, take another right or left turn. And uh, uh, probably one of the biggest issues to face the city in a long time and in a long time to come is the school bond issue.
Oh yeah, big time.
Yeah, big time. Where do you come down on the school bond? A, A and B, if it fails, what do we do?
First of all, I'm a former educator and I spent 12 years until a few years ago, volunteering, organizing, doing the curriculum, getting mentors for the horticulture program at Rogers High School. Privately funded, kids got jobs, mentoring programs, got 12 bucks an hour. So using that as a tiny, tiny miniscule example. When it comes to a new Rogers High School or the bond issue, I really think that the bonds should have been split. A lot of people don't, but I do. Because I think that the voters would have probably, would probably overwhelmingly vote for the Pell Bond. When it comes to the Rogers uh, bond, I think the big key is not so much buildings as much as how do you make education the pathway for students to have a good life? And I think that's the most important thing. So I think that the tax, the bond is going, would raise taxes and would be a burden to a lot of families. And I say that because the numbers printed in the paper were not correct. The numbers that were printed in the, the new daily news were numbers of what would the price be for homes? But it didn't say just for uh, the, the schools, just for the bond. That did not include any other expenditures for the city. So I asked the city manager two weeks ago, asked again, uh, talked to Laura Citron, the finance person. Give us real numbers, because I'm not the one who's going to decide if this, if this school will be built. The taxpayers, the voters will. And I think that they deserve real numbers. I think that we have to improve test scores. And one big thing that happened is that COVID changed, I think, how we may look at education. Rogers had 137 graduates, 136 or 37 graduates in June. That's a really small number. And to me, as an educator, I don't see how those small numbers can give students enough classes, enough diverse classes to be able to get a well-rounded education. Usually you have to have a much bigger high school because then you could offer many more classes, many more opportunities. And that happens. It deals a lot with contracts. It deals with what your budget is. But when most of your budget is in a school budget is, is tacked into how many kids per class? You can't have a class usually that's less than like 20 because of financials. And so you don't have enough classes. I personally think that, and I know some people don't agree with this, there are more educational opportunities than a regional school. I met with Portsmouth, um, head of the school committee, head of the council, myself. And I did that because the city council passed a resolution asking the mayor to call a meeting of the three councils on the island, Portsmouth, Middletown and Newport, to talk about can we cooperate with each other? And that meeting never came. It was not scheduled, which I think was really wrong. What happened
But the Middletown, uh, Middletown Council made it quite clear that they had no interest in even engaging in conversation with Newport about merger.
I'll tell you what, the CSU group spoke and they got all the numbers on, on the petition that they were supposedly, that they supposedly needed. Middletown, I think, first of all, the meeting that was held with the mayor was the three superintendents, not the councils, superintendents. And I think if the councils met, we would clear the air, we'd have a clear picture. Could we work together? Because running three school systems, we have really, I think we have a lot of good teachers. I don't think that any community, if you want your students to grow, you've got to give them all the courses. And I think that we spend so much on busing and uh, facilities, buildings that we, we need to just open it up and have all the councils meet and talk about what's, you know, what do you want? What is, what is for the betterment of the student?
So Kate, would I be accurate in saying that your position is that you oppose this bond issue, but would rather see all of the communities engage in conversation uh, that would lead or might lead to a merged educational system on Equidnic Island?
Yeah, I think that's fair. I think that you have to say, can this community afford over a hundred million dollars? Because even now we hear there's 52% reimbursement. That does not include the financing charge. And the interest rates are not going to stay where they are today. And the two numbers, they're just not going to do it.
So I'm going to just follow up on one part of that question. Um, the bond fails. What do we do if regionally, regionalization isn't an option? Because right now it isn't an option. So what do we do if the bond fails to keep a roof and a good school uh, for the students that deserve it?
First of all, I think that the reason we didn't have this open communication was really one particular member of the council decided that she didn't want it. I think that needed to happen and it didn't.
And which counselor was that?
Oh, that's the mayor. She should have, she should have called the meeting instead of saying, oh, they don't want to talk to us. I think if we called the meeting, we could say, you know, you said you didn't want to talk to us. Let's open communication and see if we can really talk about it. And I think that if the bond fails, and that won't be my decision, it's going to be the voters' decision. If the bond fails, what are we going to do? I think we're going to go back to the drawing board, because the first thing you have to really do is make sure students are safe. That's number one. How much of this that we read, you're the worst school in the whole state? How much of that can be remediated for a decent price until we open communication? And it may be that the bond fails and we find that there are no, there are no other ways. Um, I know that or so I'm told, that most of the students are in the north side of town. So could we work with yet other communities? If, can you go to, for example, to North Kingston by school bus in the same amount of time that you would go to Wickham Road? I mean, I think the conversation, if the bond fails, needs to be a big conversation. Where do we go from here? And that hasn't, nobody's had, nobody has had a plan B. No matter how many times we ask, is there a plan B? We don't get none.
Kate, if you were to uh, take a look at what your three priorities are going into this term, what would they be?
Well, the first one, and it kind of goes back to the um, comprehensive land use plan. And it goes back to where we did our goal for city council. What do you want Newport to be? And people say the most wonderful place to live. It's because everybody wants to say, I want to live in a wonderful place. So my, I guess, one of my three would be yet to end this divisiveness and work together in a cohesive way so that we can communicate with people and promote a nice community, a kind community, and one that benefits people who are here. I would say that's my first one. My second one would probably be, not probably, because I've been doing this for 20 years, fiscal responsibility. Um, we only have, and people don't realize this, we only have about 9,800 taxable properties. That's it. The rest are non-taxable. So our income for that aspect is the property taxes of, um, those 9,800. So I think that we need to fund our money wisely so it, so we don't lose families. And maybe that we encourage new families. I think that um, part of that would be trying to form public-private partnerships. And, you know, helping our economy. I think that, and I really have four, four of them. Education I talked about. I want kids to be educated so they can earn a good living, whether it's from college or learning, you know, different vocations. I think those are important. But I also think a big piece of, another of my priorities is how do you improve the quality of life? This year has been so difficult for residents. So much traffic, so much congestion, so many issues that deal around that, and COVID was part of it. I think we need a good traffic management system. And it all comes together with how do we communicate? I mean, I communicate with emails, texts, telephone. I do not do open messenger because I'd be totally overwhelmed. I spend way more time dealing with quality of life issues um, that I enjoy. I enjoy talking to people. But I think those are the big, big issues and the priorities that I have. Because I hear it from the voters, I hear it from the residents.
Kate, instead of, you know, you've said divisiveness a couple of times. Instead of anti-divisiveness or not divisiveness, wouldn't it, is equitable the word you're looking for? Where you're looking for a fair and impartial for everybody?
I think that's part of it. Because if everybody feels that he or she is equal, then we put ourselves together and we try to get to that goal. I mean, nobody was born equal. Some people are short, some are tall. Look at me, I'm short and fat. Um, some people are, you know, in tune to, uh, how do I say it? Like I'm, I'll tell you this, I have friends who can do a Rubik's Cube in less than one minute. I can't do the Rubik's Cube. I'm good in business. But they've got a knack for it because that's what they were born with. I think that we have to take into account what do each of us have? What do we each have? And how does each person get to his or her highest potential? How do they get to a place where they're happy and they feel equal? And they have a good life? I think that's really important. I think that's what a goal should be for everybody.
Yeah, and I, you know, I just think everybody has to be given the same opportunity and everybody has to feel like they have that opportunity as well. And I'm not sure if we're there yet.
Everybody, I, I think we have opportunities that are out there. I don't think we give people enough access to them. I mean, how, and that's one of the things I say about education. Uh, and I said this forever. If you, when I was working and teaching in department heads, you have to take each person, each kid and say, what are their strong points? How can I help that kid reach as high as that kid can go? And not lump everybody together. And I think that that's true for anybody in society. I think we reach out and we say, how do we help you so that you're happy? You're satisfied? What, what do you do best? How can we help you to get there? And I don't think we have a lot of people that feel that way. They feel stressed. They, I think if I had to worry about how I would pay my rent, how I, if I had enough money to go to the grocery store, I don't know how I would deal with it. I feel so fortunate, so lucky. I really work hard, but I would not like to be in that situation. Especially if you have kids. I, I just can't imagine any family having that kind of stress.
But Kate, there are a lot of people who are in that position. There are a lot of people who are out there working two jobs. Uh, there are a lot of people who are making decisions whether or not uh, to buy medications, to put food on the table, uh, to pay rent, to be, to be able to put a, a roof over their head. Um, so it's, it's a, it's a huge issue and um,
A huge issue. It's wrenching. For me, it's wrenching. I mean, people tell me that, they said, Kate, you know, I can't, this medicine costs $90. I don't have $90. I, I try to help them through a quiet way. I think that there's so many people that are in that situation that I don't think we on the city council can do each individual, but I think we have to find a way to cohesively bring together people so we can try our best, whether it's with the state, the feds. Too many people are in a position where they're in a volatile, a, a situation that's really very difficult. And I empathize. I don't, I don't have an exact answer on, it's not just in Newport, it's all over the country. How do you help people that are vulnerable? I think that's a, a fair and tough question and I can't say that Kate Leffler has 100% of it.
And you're, you're correct. This is not a Newport issue. This is a, this is a national issue, maybe even a worldwide issue for that matter.
I think so. One of the things that really bothers me, I did a TV show for, I think it was ABC, my, maybe five years ago. They asked me, because I met the, I met a commentator from, I think it was NBC. And I was in this grocery line and talking about the high cost of medications. And the person next to me, who I didn't know, said, oh my God, you seem to know a lot. I said, did a whole lot of research, because I do a lot of research. I said, let me give you an example, because we were, we pulled out of the grocery line. And I said, Veterans Administration, when Medicare Part D came along as part of, um, as part of the CARES Act, um, I'm sorry, the one with the insurance. Veterans Administration was allowed to negotiate the cost of medications. And at that time, if the veterans, if you had insurance for medications through veterans, I think it was the first one I used was Lipitor. Your copay would be like $7 a month. If you didn't, if you got it through Medicare Part D, it was like 60. And then I traced it through and I have friends, actually I have four friends who are major, major corporate people and pharmaceuticals. I said, how the hell can that be? And they all said, well, you have to realize that the feds, when they did Medicare Part D, allowed, and I've heard this so often that I, I almost can swear it's true, that the pharmaceutical companies helped write the act. So what does that do? It means somehow big business won against what should be the right and more. the right and moral thing to do. That's just-
What, what, what it means is that, uh, uh, the pharmaceuticals are among the biggest lobbies in Washington. And they're, they're spreading their money around to, uh, to the right senators and, and representatives to get what they want.
It is. And that's one of them. That's the pharmaceuticals. Then you look at copays for a lot of other things. And even I think when it comes to food and making sure that everybody in the country is fed and working families, as well as those who are disabled, those who work two jobs and can't make it. Food, since, since COVID, I noticed it myself, a lot of food prices have gone up. So how do you help each of those families? It, it's a big question. A lot of my things, you're right, absolutely right. The lobbyists have taken, taken over a lot of government. And I love to follow the money. That's one of my hobbies. I follow the money, I look at where it goes. And I never take a donation, ever, from any corporate or corporate, um, I just never do it, because I'm not gonna take them, gonna come before the council or anywhere and say, oh, I want you to vote for this. I'm not voting for that, because it's not what I feel is the moral thing to do. I can't, I, I really feel sorry for a lot of families. And I wish I had a magic wand. I don't. I have a big mouth. And I'm a big advocate for people, but, I mean, I've, I've taken on and gone to the Attorney General myself for a lot of issues to help people and fill out, you know, paperwork to try to get them to have a more equitable solution. Because even though it's not part of my city council job, it's part of who I am. And I, I don't want to look in the mirror like my grandfather used to say. When you die, you only leave one thing, your name. It's a good one or it's a bad one. And I don't want to die and say I left a bad name.
Go ahead there, Frank.
Uh, I just, you know, I think we've, we've covered an awful lot and I, my, my only last question to Kate would be whether or not there's anything else that we have missed that you would like to, to comment on?
All I can say is, after twenty years, most people I think know me. I get calls from all over the city. I don't turn anybody away. Because I feel like I live here, because I love it here. And I am who I am, and maybe we don't always agree. But we can always agree to disagree. I think at the end of the day, the people know they can call me, text me, email me. And if I can help, I will. Am I perfect? Absolutely not. Do I have a, a big voice for my little short body? Yes. But it is who I am, and I just can say I do the best I can. That's all I can say.
Kate, how can people get in touch with you?
They can call me, four oh one, eight four nine, four eight one eight. They can text me, four oh one, nine five two, three four six one. They can email me, K A T E L E O N A R, and no D on Leonard. I did it on purpose. It's no junk mail, because they all think it's a mistake. So it's kateleonard with no D at icloud.com. And people know where I am. My door is awfully open. Well, except for COVID, I'm more careful. But usually the doors open, a cup of coffee if somebody calls and wants to come over. I'm being more careful now, because I'm not a spring chicken. Uh, that's who I am.
Excellent. And, uh, Kate, uh, will be on the September eighth. Of course, everybody should go, um, wherever you live in Rhode Island, should go and participate in the primary on September eighth. But you'll see Kate's name there if you live in Ward Three. If you do not know what ward you live in, visit the city of Newport's website. They have a nice fancy map. Where you can find out what ward you live in and all sorts of other great information. If you visit the Secretary of State's website, you can see your sample ballot. And that will also tell you what ward you live in. Um, everybody in Ward one, two, three in the state of Rhode Island should go on September eighth and vote. And then, of course, on November third. Um, and most people are voting ahead of time, um, so make sure you hit all those deadlines. There is a, if you're in Newport and you're voting early, there is a box on Bull Street, um, which is the city that runs up, um, on the southern side of City Hall, where you can drop your ballot boxes as well. Kate, did we miss anything else?
Nope. Thanks for having me.
All right, and I apologize again for the technical issues and we'll get it worked out, um, next time. So we appreciate it. Thanks, Kate.
I could do, so thank you.
You're welcome. And, uh, let's see here, Frank, you're still there?
Yeah, I'm here.
Holy technical. We, uh, we had quite a challenging morning. Um, I will, uh, you know, apologize again that, uh, you know, we, we use this platform and, uh, sometimes you need the very latest update on your internet browser and sometimes it takes longer to download and, um, you know, that's an issue we're having this morning.
We got it, we got it done and, uh, it was good to, um, you know, another interesting, I think another interesting, uh, interview. So, um, more information and things that people can use as they, as they make their decisions.
That's it. Coming up at, uh, three PM, we'll be joined by Olga Anger, who is running for an at-large seat. And then at five PM, we'll be joined by Derek Grinkin, who is running for an at-large seat. And then at eleven AM tomorrow, we wrap up our council candidate video series with Kevin Mashad, who is running for an at-large seat. And then we are already booking the, we're booking, um, rep, uh, interviews, as well as Congress, uh, interviews as well. So lots of stuff coming up. Our voter guide is available on whatsupnup.com. Anything else, Frank, before we catch up in two hours?
Well, I'm gonna see you shortly.
All right, and-
I'll run out for an hour and then I'll be back.
All right. On behalf of Ryan Bellmore, Frank Prozess, all of us here at WhatsUp Nup, want to thank Catherine Leonard for joining us again. She is running for third ward seat on Newport City Council. She will be on your September eighth ballot. And, uh, if you want to check out any of the videos, as well as any other, um, get any other information, profiles, things like that, you can do that on whatsupnup.com as well. That's gonna do it for this. We'll be back at three PM with Olga Anger.